This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting. It is Monday, December 20th, 2021. Please note this meeting is being recorded. Also note that it is the city's policy to require face coverings during all public meetings in City Hall regardless of vaccination status unless a minimum of six feet of separation from others can be consistently maintained. And just to let everyone know, we are definitely all six feet apart. Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mayor Bremel is absent. Alderman Anderson?
Here.
Alderman Ashauer is excused as well. Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Davalos is excused?
Alderman Davalos is absent for today.
Yes. Alderman Goodman?
Here.
Alderman Crissell?
Here.
Alderman Widener?
Here.
Alderman Wilson?
Here.
City Clerk Julie Clark here. City Treasurer Anne Behrens?
She is also absent for today.
City Attorney Brooke Lenaman?
Here.
City Administrator John Cokely?
Here.
Assistant City Administrator Christina White?
Here.
Police Chief Ray Toronto?
Here.
Finance Director Kevin Dahlstrand?
Here.
Community and Economic Development Director Ron Menzer?
Here.
Public Works Director Phil Kukler?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the, we need an appointment for a temporary chairman. I would need a motion and a second for that, please.
This is Alderman Goodman. I move that we appoint Alderman Berry as the temporary chairman.
Second, Alderman Wilson.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Goodman and a second by Alderman Wilson. Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Crissell?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
That is all.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Now, if you would please, I will stand and anyone else in the room, please stand. Those at home, please say the Pledge of Allegiance silently to yourself.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we will go to a, we have a public hearing for the 2021 Property Tax Levy Truth in Taxation. We need a motion and a second for this. Anyone?
So, this is Alderman Goodman. I move that we go into public hearing for the 2021 Property Tax Levy Truth in Taxation.
Second, Alderman Wilson.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Goodman and a second by Alderman Wilson. Clerk, could you, to open the 2021 Property Tax Levy Truth in Taxation Public Hearing, clerk, please record the time and read a roll.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Here.
Aye. Alderman Crissell?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Finance Director Dahlstrand, you were going to make the presentation on this.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Item 6, Stay Tight, is the ordinance is O202144, which is consideration of the calendar year 2021 Property Tax Levy Ordinance. As we've done since 2004, we are again requesting that the county clerk apply property tax caps to our ordinance even though by Home Rule we are not required to do so. That has been a standing council direction, again, like I said, since 2004. And we will be submitting a letter to that regard to the county clerk when we submit the approved levy to the county clerk. I will point out that we are asking for approximately $17,000 less in the levy for the police pension. That is the result of the most recent police actuarial report. And again, that does change year to year as we do have an actuarial report done every year. There was approximately $11.8 million in new construction within the Winfield Township headquarters of the community and an estimated EAV increase of 3.13%. We discussed that at the Public Safety and Finance Committee meeting. That information was obtained from the Winfield Township Assessor's Office. Similar information was requested from the Naperville Township Assessor's Office but was not received in tight time for this publication. You will note though that the county clerk will take all of that into consideration when they extend our final levy numbers. That's all I have mentioned.
Okay, I'm going to go through the list and we'll call on each Alderman individually for comments or questions. Alderman Anderson?
No questions or comments.
Alderman Ashauer is not here. I have no comments or questions. Alderman Goodman?
Thank you, nothing from me.
Okay, Alderman Crissell?
I have nothing, thank you.
Alderman Widener?
No questions or comments, just thank you for the report and exercising all the professional work and standards on this.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
No questions, but also congratulations on all the figures and thank you. Looks like we're back in business.
Very good. Right now, though, we have any comments from the public? I see someone in the audience who is raising their hand, Mr. Bob Seibert, if you'd like to come to the podium. Don't forget to announce your name and address.
Bob Seibert, Albright Court. I have a question on the new construction in Winfield Township is stated as $11,840,000. What proportion of this new construction is in the TIF districts and what portion is not in the TIF districts?
I do not have the answer at this time, however, that information has been requested from the Winfield Township Assessor's Office and has not been received at this point.
Okay, because when we look at the statement from the December 6th meeting, it says that in Naperville Township, there's 5.6 million. Now, the 5.6 million in Naperville Township would generate, if we use last year's 7.5511 2020 rate to all tax districts, $422,800. And to the city, $36,960. But depending with Winfield Township, and if half of that was in the TIFs, we would then be generating away from the taxing districts, that same amount, about $422,000. In the city, we'd be losing $36,960. And that would be lost every year from now on, compounding as the EAV increases. So, I think it's important to utilize in the budget and the assessment with the property tax that we know what the percentage breakdown is with dollars that will be coming with new construction into the city and reoccurring in the future. And those dollars that are not coming to the city or going to the other taxing districts in that, just for that 11,800 would generate to all districts, $893,000 with last year's rate. And to the city itself, it would be $78,194. Now, Frank Bernard would always come to these meetings and he would always be upset that more citizens weren't here to ask questions when they had a chance on the budget. So, this is for Frank. What we also should be looking at is the fact that about 16 years ago, the Home Rule Sales Tax was instituted. At that time, some of the people that are still sitting at the table made a pledge to the citizens that when the Home Rule Sales Tax paid off, the $660,000, it was a five-year short-term, short run where they didn't have funds from TIF 1, that some of the funds on the Home Rule Sales Tax would abate property taxes. This current fiscal year estimating $1.5 million in the Home Rule Sales Tax. I feel that it's time to set a plan so that the citizens, under the current economic trends, the citizens should have a benefit, whether it be $200,000 or whatever in a sales, or I'm sorry, property tax abatement, which would not lower it, but each year just lower it. And if there were problems, would not. But a million and a half has increased. And the argument at that time was the fact that other people would pay this coming into Warrenville. So, this is why it was argued that it could be utilized to abate taxes. But unfortunately, over the years, people have forgotten what they pledged to the citizens.
Thank you. Do we have any, we have no callers, I can see, for comments? Then, we have no emails that have come in, is that correct? Okay, we have no email comments also. All right, we need a motion and a second to close the public hearing.
Alderman Goodman, I move we close the public hearing.
Second, Alderman Wilson.
Okay, a motion by Alderman Goodman and a second by Alderman Wilson to close the public hearing. Clerk, if you please record the time and read the roll.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Crissell?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
And Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, on to citizens' comments. We will now hear any verbal or written comments from the public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please announce yourself with your name and address. Please speak slowly and clearly so we can capture your information. Once we have everyone wishing to speak, I will call upon you one by one to proceed with your comments. I know that Mr. Seibert, is this, would you like to make a second comment or was this for your comment during the, about the Property Tax Levy? Okay, if you would please come to the podium? Bob Seibert, please make sure you, again, your name and address.
Bob Seibert, Albright Court. On, I had requested from the city information concerning the Conforti development adjacent to my property. They sent back stating that I had to give specifics. I gave a full page of specifics, basically looking for the site plan, the size of the barn, the location, the location of the road, the private road, and the amount of the water and sewer for the individual one house. I received on the 11/29, a document stating no such records exist. So, there are no records on any of the dimensions, the locations, or the dollar amount of what was voted on in the agreement. So, apparently, the city council voted without knowing where the buildings would be built, the size of the barn, or the amount of the dollar for the individual sewer and water hookup. And this, with the document, I also asked for the agreement, copy of the agreement. I was told there was no agreement found, there was no document. So, that was on the paperwork that was sent to me. So, I went down to City Hall and asked that, I knew that there was an agreement because I was at the meeting. I was told perhaps they did it in executive session. And I said, no, that did not occur. So, I said I would go to Plan B. I thanked for the information. Plan B, when you're ex-military, you always have a Plan B. So, I went back, within an hour, I had received a phone call from the city stating they found the document. I said, it's a miracle. We found the document. And you could hear the bells ringing. So, I picked up the document, went down there, had a hold of the document. And in the document verifies the situation that my three concerns that I have are still three concerns. And it's the fact that with the current zoning, things can happen that have not been discussed. And I believe they should have been discussed on this agreement. So, then I would just say to everyone here, happy holidays, happy Hanukkah, and have a blessed Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Seibert. Email comments will be read aloud. Do we have any email comments? We had none. Okay. Now, once we conclude the citizens' comments, there will not be another opportunity for comment this evening. Okay, on to official and staff comments. I have some notes here from the mayor. The 2022 community calendars are available thanks to a generous donation from Lexington Homes. The 2022 community calendars are now available at City Hall, the Police Department, the City Library, the Fire Protection District. Thanks also go out to Keith Swindon for the beautiful pictures of the community for the calendar. Tonight is Alderman Wilson's last meeting on the city council. We wish him well and thank him for all the years of service that he has given to the city of Warrenville and to Ward 2. It's been great being a partner with Alderman Wilson for these years. Thank you very much. Happy holidays. The City Hall and the Police Department will be closed Thursday and Friday of this week for a winter holiday and Thursday and Friday of next week for New Year's Eve and Day. Regular office hours will resume the following Monday. This is a reminder that the city council will meet in person starting January 3rd, 2022. Committee Chairman will need to decide if their respective committee of the whole meetings will be conducted in person as well or continue to be virtual. Thank you. Alderman Anderson? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Oh, go ahead. I went out, I went out of sequence here. So, Alderman Anderson, if you could wait one second and I'll come right back to you. Thank you. Clerk?
I got nothing, sorry.
Okay, Treasurer is not available. Okay, Alderman Anderson, go for it.
Thank you. On behalf of Alderman Ashauer and myself, to all of our citizens of Ward 1 and to the entire city of Warrenville, I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday season. I wish all a Merry Christmas or a Happy Hanukkah and a Happy New Year and/or all that you might be celebrating. Let's hopefully get some great time with family and friends and refresh and celebrate this incredible city in which we live. Secondly, I made this announcement in one of our committee meetings, but wanted to do it formally in the city council meeting, that I have submitted my letter to the city that I will need to be stepping down due to a change in my life circumstance and out of respect of the role and want to make sure that it can be fully served the way it should be served. My effective date will be at the end of January, so effective February 1, I'll step down as Ward 1 Alderman. And with that, that's all I have.
Thank you. I also would like to wish everyone a happy holidays, whatever holiday you are celebrating, and a Happy New Year. Also, I would like to thank, personally like to thank Alderman Wilson for his dedication all these years, how he has taken care of Ward 2 and has always stepped up to be on different committees and just has taken so much of his personal time and dedicated it to the city. We really, and I personally really do appreciate everything he has done. It's been a pleasure working with you and I know that we will always think of you and we think of solar power. Okay, Alderman Goodman?
Thank you. I likewise want to say farewell to Alderman Wilson, who has served with me on at least three work groups. I remember when I was first elected to the city council, he was the newest Alderman, having just been appointed and then elected himself. So, we did a lot of our onboarding and occasionally training together at the very beginning of my tenure on this council. So, the fact that he is leaving makes me feel like I've been doing this a very long time. I do want to thank him for his hard work, for his friendship and support. We always run for reelection at the same time together. And I think one other thing I would encourage everyone else to think about is that two of the work groups I serve on with Alderman Wilson, the EMRP and the Long Range Financial Planning Work Groups, still exist. And so, maybe consider whether you could step up to be on those work groups, which are certainly very important and time-consuming. And if we do have new Aldermen who are going to be joining, you know, they may be a bit daunted by some of those tasks, but maybe they would step up to it. I mean, who knows? It's hard to say right now, but someone will need to fill his large shoes. So, thank you, Alderman Wilson, and good luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you. Alderman Crissell?
Thank you. Would also like to extend a happy holidays to everyone, take some time, spend with some family and friends, look forward to the new year. And I'd also like to thank Alderman Wilson for all of his hard work and dedication and time he's put into this role. And I will, I will always think of you, Alderman Wilson, as Senator Wilson. So, thanks again for your service.
Thank you. Alderman Widener?
Thank you. I had a chance to take a deep dive into the standard inventory analysis and management plan that Davy Resource Group did. It's a fine report and I thought that it's most interesting that they're be able to calculate the dollar value that trees provide and that sum is nothing to overlook. It was $328,000 in environmental services that's provided to our city annually through the trees that we have on our parkways. That's just on the parkways, not on private properties. And this, the thing that's most important is that the majority of that goes into increasing our property values. It was somewhere around $120,000 that helps us to maintain our property values and increase our property values. The other thing that was second highest value, or 29%, was the savings of energy consumption, which amounted to $93,695. And I just thought, well, it's extremely important to care and preserve and protect what we have as far as trees go. Planting more trees will offer a great return on our investment as you study these numbers and the impact that it has on our urban canopy. So, with that, I'd like to thank Alderman Wilson for your pragmatic leadership and service to the community. And it's been great over the years working with you in Ward 2 and sharing perspectives and opinions on different matters that we make decisions on or have made decisions on. So, thank you and I'll look forward to seeing you in the neighborhood and good luck in your retirement. And finally, happy holidays to one and all and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson, or should I say Senator Wilson? Is that it? Is that what you're going for?
Just between you, me, and the fence post, I'm really not a senator. But hitherto, I appreciate the, you know, you can call me Senator if you wish and I will respond. Hitherto, I'm not. But I do want to say thank you so very, very much. I've really enjoyed this time here as an Alderman. I was appointed back in 2010, I guess it was. And I've had the opportunity to serve with all of you on board, some of you for quite a few different programs that we've worked on. Leah, Lisa, you, you and I have been on several of these individual projects that we've worked on and it's been a pleasure to work with you. You are very, very smart, intelligent, and led the way for me so that I could make some decisions that I might not have made otherwise. And to everybody that has been here and to all the staff
And to everybody that has been here, and to all the staff, particularly the staff, John, and the mayor, and each individual, Ken, and Ron, and Kevin, and Phil, every one of them has been helpful to me to grow in my ability to do this. I had never been in, been in church, but never in this. Thank you so very, very much. I've enjoyed it. I think this is a wonderful group that really works together. And the one thing I did find out is that every single one of you, every one of the Aldermen that I've met and worked with, have one desire, and that is to make Warrenville a better place for all of us. Invite those people who wish to come to a wonderful community. This is the one that you want. I've only been here since 2004, but it's been a nice time. I appreciate it. I ask blessings on every single one of you, and I hope that everyone, including all those in Ward Two who supported me, have a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays, and I look forward to seeing you at lunch sometime. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Okay. City Administrator Cokely?
Thank you. Couple of quick things. First, happy holidays to everyone, whatever you celebrate. I hope it's safe and happy, and you are able to enjoy some time with family and friends. Secondly, a couple of, or programming notes, if you will. As we're going back to in-person meetings for the council, any Alderman that needs to attend remote due to illness or sickness, or business travel, based on the city's policy and the state laws, please, if you have questions about the policy or where to find it, contact me, or contact, let's say Deputy Clerk Gravetti. But you need to notify the city clerk, Julie needs to have that information in advance of the meeting. The policy says four hours, but the earlier the better, so that we know who is attending and who's not in person. Secondly, just a note, we will be recognizing Alderman Wilson and also Alderman Anderson for their service. Thank you to both. Jay will be around a little bit longer. Bob, we're going to miss you, but you're always welcome to come back to meetings, make some positive comments only, though. Anytime. You can attend remotely if you'd like. But we will be recognizing both at a future meeting. We wanted to not do it tonight because the mayor wouldn't be present, but we will find a time when both, when the mayor will be here and Alderman Wilson will be available, but it might be a little bit after he's gone. But we'll be happy to have him back. Finally, I'm going to, we forgot to add this to Alderman Berry's comments, but anyone in the community that is interested in serving on the council and filling one of the new vacancies, please contact the mayor and let him know. Anyone who knows of people that might be really a good candidate for such an appointment, please talk to those people and have them contact the mayor. It is, I will just say this from my experience, and I live in Ward Two, it's difficult to find Ward Two volunteers especially. It's sometimes difficult for all four wards, but especially Ward Two. So if there are people, we need to have some folks and fill the roles up here, and you all can attest to how easy it is to do these jobs, or at least how much pleasure and enjoyment you did get from all your service or continuing. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney Lenaman?
No comment, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now on to the approval of the agenda. We need a motion and a second. Alderman Widener, would you like to do that, please?
Certainly, thank you. I move to approve the agenda for the December 20, 2021 City Council regular meeting.
Second, Alderman Wilson, my final second.
We have a motion by Alderman Widener and a second by Alderman Wilson. Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Kruschel?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman? And Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Okay, now on to the approval of the minutes. Again, Alderman Widener, would you like to handle that?
Thank you. I move to approve the minutes of the December 6, 2021 City Council regular meeting, and to approve the minutes of the December 13, 2021 Public Works and Infrastructure Committee meeting.
Second by Alderman Wilson?
Okay, we have a...
I'm going to second everything.
Okay. I'll write that down. We have a motion by Alderman Widener and a second by Alderman Wilson. Clerk, please read the roll.
Alderman Kruschel?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
And Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, now for the consent agenda. Item A, offer second reading and pass ordinance O2021-44 for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1, 2021, and ending April 30, 2022. B, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation, waive second reading, and approve ordinance O2021-45 amending Section 7-2-2 of the City Code regarding outdoor seating areas on public right-of-ways. C, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2021-73 approving outdoor seating area rules. D, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2021-74 approving a local agency agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation regarding funding Phase III construction engineering for the DuPage Parkway and Illinois Prairie Path Trailhead Improvements Project in an amount not to exceed $862,817. E, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2021-75 approving a professional service agreement with Engineering Resource Associates for Phase III construction engineering for the DuPage Parkway and Illinois Prairie Path Trailhead Improvements Project in an amount not to exceed $86,551. F, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and approve the IDEC recommendation to acknowledge certain holidays and observances in the first three months of 2022. G, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and direct staff to remove the fleet management technician position from the authorized strength ordinance the next time it is updated. H, accept Mayor Brummel's recommendation and approve the reappointment of Chairman and Ward Two Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Representative, Tim Cosgrove, for a five-year term expiring January 19, 2027. I, accept Mayor Brummel's recommendation and approve the reappointment of Ward Four Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Representative, Mark Taylor, for a five-year term expiring January 19, 2027. J, accept staff recommendation and approve the waiver of raffle and 24-hour liquor license fees and bonds required for the organizations listed on the 2022 waiver of license fee list. K, receive and file minutes of the Environmental Advisory Commission meeting held on September 21, 2021. L, receive and file minutes of the Environmental Advisory Commission meeting held on October 19, 2021. M, receive and file report of invoices paid up to December 15, 2021, in the amount of N, authorize expenditures for invoices due on or before January 3, 2022, in the amount of $201,031.92. O, receive and file report of master debit credit card expenditures for the month of November 2021, in the amount of $11,336.21. I need a motion and a second.
Alderman Widener moves to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor Protem Claire Berry.
And Alderman Wilson? Are you seconding?
I'm sorry, I'm seconding?
Yes, right?
The motion.
Don't leave early, this is your last meeting.
All right, I got you, okay. Yeah, I'm just flipping around with numbers here, yes.
Alderman Wilson, you second, correct?
Yeah, I second. That sounds like a good idea.
Good. Thank you. Okay, Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Seriously, aye.
Alderman Kruschel, thank you.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, motion passes. Now, we have one item under the regular agenda. Do we need to have, we need to have somebody read that, correct?
Probably be good to have a discussion and then have the motion, because we need to put a name in there.
Oh, okay.
It gets confusing.
The City Administrator Cokely is going to do a brief explanation.
Very brief. Thank you. There is a issue that has come up to the attention of our administration staff. Christina and I have been looking at with our compensation plan. As you recall, a few years ago, an entire new compensation plan with the comparables was developed. Most of it is working very well, but we've discovered an issue. We would like to have Alderman work with us for a couple of weeks to, a couple of times over a few weeks, to look at it and discuss it, and then it'll be presented. There are some very specific employees that it would impact, so it will be discussed in closed session, most likely mid-January, if not very early in February. Due to the quick turnaround time, we want to do this very efficiently, and because of staff being involved, we want to try to do these during the daytime. We do need an Alderman that would volunteer. We could have as many as two. I have chatted with Alderman Goodman about this matter, and I know that she is interested, but there may be others, and the council would need to then vote to designate someone. So with that, if there were volunteers, and then whoever you all determine, if you can fill their name in the motion, and make it and second it, then we can keep moving. Thank you.
Okay, so we need to know, are there any Aldermen interested in volunteering? I know I would like to be on this, but the meetings are during the day, and unfortunately, I am not capable of doing that because of my job. So... Not seeing anyone else?
This is Alderman Goodman, and I'm happy to serve if required.
Great.
I would second Alderman Goodman for this position.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. And thank you definitely to Alderman Goodman. Alderman Widener, you had a...
If a motion's been made, I will back off. I was just going to make the motion, but I think Alderman Goodman has already moved, and Alderman Wilson chimed in with a second.
Alderman Widener, I don't think Alderman Goodman made a motion, so you could go ahead and do that, and Alderman Wilson can second it formally.
All right. Alderman Widener moves to accept the staff recommendation and designate Alderman Goodman to work with staff on changes to the city's compensation plan.
Second by Alderman Wilson.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second by Alderman Wilson. Motion made by Alderman Widener. Clerk, if you could please read the roll?
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Widener? Alderman Widener?
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
There we go.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Kruschel?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes, and I'd like to thank Alderman Goodman for stepping up. I know your plate is very full, and I appreciate you doing that. Thank you so much. Okay. We have nothing under unfinished business or new business. We just, we have nothing for a closed session, and we need one more motion and a second to adjourn. Someone would like to do that?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn with my total thanks and appreciation for everything that you all have done to help Warrenville be the place that it needs to be. Thank you.
Alderman Goodman seconds.
Okay. We have a motion by Alderman Wilson and a second by Alderman Goodman. Clerk, can you please read the roll?
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Kruschel?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion passes, and so we are adjourned, and thank you, everyone. Have a happy holiday.
Good night.
Good night.
This comes...
Good night.